Call the meeting.
That should be a heads up right there, shouldn't it?
Yep.
Ms. Steve, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Hal Glanville.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukin.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Gary Tellkamp.
Here.
Linda Varval.
Here, I think.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You OK, Deborah?
Maybe. It's allergies. We can move to the other end.
As always, counsel, if you have any conflict of interest items, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November 4th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 4th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $192,850.25.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $55,432.92.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the council tonight? All right. Go on to our council updates. Daniel. I was going to ask you to tell us how to pronounce it correctly when you got up here.
You can tilt it. It should be on, and you can tilt it. It needs to be close to your mouth.
All right. So Daniel's here to give the council. He's from Bros Engineering, a 2024 bridge inspection report.
Carl, is that working? It is. OK. OK. Thank you.
Give it a couple of tests.
We got it.
We got it, Carl.
Thank you.
OK, so this is just our annual bridge inspection report that we do once a year. Doug, he came down last year and did it, but, you know, your Jennings Avenue Bridge, that's in excellent, excellent shape. Few minor cracking. Nothing really significant. The Minnacotta Bridge, you know, we've currently in the process of replacing that, but that's in pretty tough shape, and that's currently posted. But, pretty simple. Open it up to any questions that the council would have and be happy to answer. Got this binder here for Tracy. He must not be here tonight.
No. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Daniel?
How much longer can we get out of it before it gets replaced?
Well, that's a little bit of a trick question. Right now, though, we're in the permitting process and design with Jennings Avenue. That took about a year and a half to get the 404 permit. So, once we get all the permitting, then we submit everything to the review, and then they'll give us a letting authorization. So, it could be anywhere from a year to two years before that takes place.
Planned and budgeted for 2025.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. It just, it takes a long time to get through all the Corps of Engineers, the permits and everything, so.
You do have a new business item related to the Minnacotta Bridge replacement project, Item D, and so if you had some questions regarding that new business item, might be a good time to ask Daniel some of those.
Yeah, for sure.
OK.
Yes. I don't know, did you forward that agreement or that scope of services to them?
Yes, they have it all. They have it in their packets.
They have that. OK. Yeah.
And I do have a question along those lines.
Yep.
I don't recall that that particular study needed to be done for the Jennings Bridge.
Correct. Yeah.
Can you help us understand why they're both in a historic district?
Correct. So when we applied for that permit, it was in 2017, and the Corps of Engineers updates their permit every five years. And so now we're underneath the new permit, and unfortunately, we're dealing with a whole new group of people at the Corps of Engineers. So we're kind of at their mercy. They set all the review, everything, and we pretty much have to follow with that, with them.
OK. It just seems like an awful lot of 800-pound gorilla overreach in what they're asking for, what they're looking at.
Sure. Yeah. You know, that architectural historian review, to say why it wasn't required on Jennings and now they're requiring it on Minnacott, I can't say for certain, other than it was underneath the old rules. Of course, they're always updating and reviewing. They have a whole group of people that are reviewing this at the Corps of Engineers. So we could, you know, reach out to them directly for any specific questions.
So I was under the impressions we were going to have 2025 as our replacement beginning of our replacement of that bridge. Now this is set back, and how far back?
It's all contingent on when this permit is obtained.
So may not be till '26 or '27?
Correct. Yeah. That's a good chance.
OK.
You know, last, last time it took a year and a half to get this permit, it may very well take that longer, longer.
Although we've already been working on that, trying to get that permit from years behind us.
Yep.
They're still looking at it as starting that all over again?
No. They've been reviewing it, and one of their comments is they'd like an architectural historian to review this.
I've been asking along the way if we couldn't reutilize the rail that's on that bridge, because it is historic, and it's in good shape. So if that could be integrated into the design so that we could keep that railing that's on that bridge, that might take care of the issue.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good, good suggestion. They're looking at the overall bigger picture. But the railing itself that we have currently designed is, of course, the bridge will be longer and a little wider and that, but we could sure salvage it for you guys, brother use, but currently slated for a new railing to go on there, so.
Is it more about the historical nature of the bridge or the area?
Both. They want to see everything. So they, in that email, it goes into specifics of what they're looking for. Yeah.
I mean, is there any way to, without upsetting them, ask if it is really necessary?
I wish Tracy was here. He was in the meetings multiple times.
Right.
Yeah, it is necessary. Yeah.
And how will this bridge affect the...
You're not married to this one company. You're welcome to go get other proposals. This company is the one on the rapid, and they've been bought out by this other ESOG gym, so.
And there's only two that you know of, and there's no list of those that are approved by the Secretary of Interior, even though they're supposed to be approved by the Secretary of Interior in order for us to use it for this.
Correct.
So you can go out and look for some. Let me know when you find them.
It's good to have help from Washington.
Keep telling yourself that.
We're the government. We're here to help.
Yeah.
OK. I don't have anything else, counsel. Do you have any other questions? Thank you, Daniel.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do you see anything from us to accept this proposal?
Well, if you guys want to sign it, or if you want to wait and sign it later, either you can use that.
OK, thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through I?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through I.
Second.
Larry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right. Our only ordinance tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1261?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1261, supplemental appropriation ordinance. Second.
Discussion. So, counsel, if you remember, we do these twice a year. If necessary, we'll do them in the first half of the year and then the last half of the year. Ms. Steve, is there anything in particular you'd like to go over again?
The sewer and water charges are consistent every year. We had a nod at finding, I think, back in 2014 or 15, that said that we have to bill city entities for the use of those, and then water and sewer can forgive those billing charges. So those are things that are consistent in the second supplemental appropriation for the year, because obviously we don't know how much water they're going to use and how much sewer they get billed for at the beginning of the year, so we can't, we can't put those into the budget and then subsequently waive them till this one. Everything else on there is things that we didn't plan for, and with all the other appropriations that we've done, it's a, it's a pretty decent-sized dollar amount for what we faced for the year. We have 1.5 million in additional appropriations in the general fund, 9,000 in liquor, lodging, and dining, over a million in the additional sales tax fund, 15,000 for the bid fund, Hot Springs capital improvement, 743,000, and Evans plunge, sorry, I left out the golf course, water and sewer. Yeah, the water fund, 637,000, wastewater fund, 420,000, solid waste, 9,000, golf course, 166,000, and Evans plunge, 10,500. Pretty significant appropriations for the end of the year. If you have any questions about any of them, I annotated your versions to give you some ideas of some of the things that you've approved in between the budget time and the last one that you approved to hopefully answer the questions. But if any of those don't make sense, or you have additional questions, please ask, but this appropriation is needed to cover the expenses of the city for the year.
The golf course, 166,000, that was the repair of the, of the pro shop and the...
No, we did those in the first one. Those are water and sewer charges, subsequently forgiven by the water and sewer fund.
OK. Thanks.
Golf course is a big user of water.
One thing we had talked about is that a lot of these, not all of these expenses, counsel was aware of. We know why they hit the budget. Just looking at one from highway, streets, and roadways, the machinery and equipment for $258,000. That was for a front-end loader that went belly up, and it made more sense to replace it rather than continue to put bad money in it. So, counsel, you approve that one. The significant costs related to the road reconstruction, the sidewalk and all of those, we've been aware that we were going to be looking at those. The additional 1,900 feet for water line, water main from Minnacotta up to Battle Mountain. These are all expenses, counsel, that you were, you know, you discussed and were expecting. Now, we're at the point that we need to ask you to go ahead and approve those expenses.
And I don't know if yours is stapled weird like mine, but whoever put the packet together, this page isn't stapled correctly, so if as we're reading it, it didn't make sense, it's because stapled wrong, but it's all in there.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Steve, would you call the roll, please?
Gary Tellkamp.
Aye.
Is that a yes, sir?
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Hal Glanville.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Linda Varval.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. On to new business. Our first new business item is a discussion only. It's an update from Fall River Health Systems, or Health Services, regarding progress towards their housing development adjacent to the hospital.
Hello. Hello. I'm Georgia Holmes. I'm president of the Fall River Health Services, and this is Jesse Nas. He's our CEO. CEO's got it right. Anyway, I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to annex that land in, and we are really trying very hard to get this done as soon as possible, but we hit a kind of a snag, and that was the Dream Design backed out on us. So we decided to, our board meeting on October 31st, to research the feasibility of moving forward to develop the infrastructure ourselves. As part of that project, though, we are seeking for further help from the city, if possible, and I would like to ask if you would be willing to let your civil engineer, Tracy Bastian, help us to send out bids to get this infrastructure done. And I hope that you understand this is for our workforce housing. Our goal is to keep people living here in Hot Springs. We've had two in the last couple of weeks that have gone because they don't have housing here. If they live here and they're not transient, in other words, we have to get people that come in and stay maybe for three months or whatever, that funding that we give to them goes somewhere else. We want them here. We want them to build a home here and start supplying more and more of their resources back into the community. So this is our help, and I don't know if Jesse, you want to say anything else?
Yeah, our whole intention is to keep moving forward. We know how much housing's needed in the community. We just are not engineers at the hospital. We do healthcare, so that's the one hangup. We're willing to put the money up for this. We just need help in drafting bid packages just because we don't have that expertise. Our board, like Georgia said, it voted to keep moving forward with this. Our hopes is if we get that infrastructure in, then we can get the actual housing let out to different organizations that build houses specifically. The biggest hangup we had is the risk with the funds to put that infrastructure in places. There is risk if those lots don't sell, especially when we're talking about affordable housing, to be able to get those costs down. So anything we can partner with to keep the costs as low as possible, that's what we're after, so. You guys got any questions? Be happy to answer for you.
When you're talking about the infrastructure, you're talking about water and sewer and streets and...
Yeah, that's like the grading over there, the dirt work, and then getting the streets and the sewer and water put in. We're fine paying for that stuff. We just need somebody to actually, that can, civil engineer that can draft up that stuff that'll make it eligible to go out for bid.
OK. So I'd like to jump in here because it may help the council with some questions. First of all, I want to thank you for coming and addressing the council. You know, we had talked last week about the importance of the public hearing this from you folks, not hearing it out on the streets. So thank you for doing that. I think it's important and confident the council appreciates it. So, for me, what we need to have a clear understanding of is what you consider a bid package and what we typically consider a bid package. A bid package is, it's not 10,000-foot level, but it's, it's a notice to the contractors that there's a project that's going on, and, you know, here's the conditions of the contract, and they can respond to it. It's not us putting together all of those specifications. That would be something for a design firm to do. So help me understand what you're expecting out of our city engineer. Are you looking to him to design roads and lots and all of those kinds of things, or just looking at, you had mentioned that Dream Design gave you permission to use what they'd already come up with. So is it looking at that and then figuring out what the right bid package is?
Yeah, that's essentially, they got down the road far enough to have that all plotted out. We just need somebody to say what would go into that bid package.
OK.
Because we don't know what, none of us know what it would take to level that out so they can design it like that for the infrastructure, and then once it's, the ground is leveled, we don't know what, how to get those specifications to make sure it meets your guys' needs, because I mean, it'll end up going back into the city, and we want to make sure that sewer and the water and everything is how you guys intend it. You don't want to inherit something that's not up to your guys' specifications.
OK. Now, when you say you get permission, do you get, was that verbal permission or was it in handwriting?
No, it's, it was part of our MOU. It's just how far we got along in the process before they backed out, so that's, that's ours.
OK.
One of the things that we'd like to see is more of our local people be involved. That's tough, and I know infrastructure right now is as costly, in fact, more, they say, than the cost of the land. So we're trying our best to make it so it's feasible for a working person to come and live here and be able to have a decent home. It's been hard, really hard, to get people to come, and then they leave because we don't have any housing for them. And with this in mind, you know, we're not going into the housing business. We are totally healthcare, but we do need providers. And like I told you last time, I think we have like 253 employees. That's a lot. But when they take money out of our community, that hurts us, and then we pay more for that, especially in our own budget. You know, we are overbudgeted in a way that we don't want to be. We want the money to stay here.
So, counsel, Georgia had called me before lunch and asked about, you know, the city's willingness to allow Tracy to work with them, and I'd asked Georgia to make that part of the request to you tonight, to allow Tracy to do that. And I still see it as, I think it's important for us to continue the conversations, for Tracy to get an opportunity to look at what Dream Design has left you, so that, you know, he can say, "OK, I'm, I'm good with doing this," or "There's not enough here for me to, you know, put together an accurate bid package." So my recommendation to the council would be to go ahead and allow Tracy to spend some city time to work with Fall River Health and see if everything is necessary for a bid package, or if there's something missing for him to advise them what they would need to put into the bid package and go out and get it.
So our goal is to include people on this committee from the city. So that is important for us, to make sure everyone that it belongs in this area, this community is involved in it. It's a big project, and we know it, but as a result, we want people to belong and feel like they are part of it. So that is another part of this.
One other question.
Go ahead.
If Tracy looks at, at what you have and says, "Yeah, there's enough bits and pieces here that a request for proposal can be," he says, "I can, I could put it together and send it out," would the expectation be that he would do that at the city's expense, or would Fall River Health compensate the city for his, the time that he would spend putting those packages together and managing that?
I think you need to discuss that. We would like as much help as we can get. This is our goal, and to make it as cost-effective for employees and people that work here in the community as possible. We are trying to keep it as low as possible.
Question I would have, this is directed to you, mayor. Would Tracy have the time with his other responsibilities to do this? And for me, that's, that will be at the front end of the discussion, to see what they have and see how long he feels it might take him to get them to a point where the bid package would be ready to hit the street. You know, if we're looking at two months or three months, and I'm just speaking here, that's a different conversation. But if it's something that he can put together, you know, in much less time, then I would certainly hope that council would help out with this. This is huge. So I think we need to have some skin in the game also.
Yeah, that's kind of the big thing, is if we can all work together, that's how we're only going to get this done. I mean, we can put so much up as the hospital, but other partners in the community have to put some skin in the game, too, to make this go. Otherwise, it just drives the process, price of that end product up, and then that kind of defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do here. So I appreciate everything you guys have done so far.
Any questions for us?
Any other questions, counsel?
Has Tracy had, have we had any contact with Tracy about this at all?
I did. I talked with him before, you know, right after lunch, along the same lines, as it really depends on what's in the documents that Dream Design has left them, and is there enough technical specs there for him to pull them together in a bid package that won't take a terribly long time? And I don't mean, you know, to say little time. I don't know. But we need to, I think Tracy needs to be, you know, given the support and the permission to go ahead and take a look at it, and if that takes him a couple of days or whatever, you know, to just get a feel for, yeah, this is something I think I could bite off, and I could work it into my schedule, and it can help him out. It's not just Fall River Health that needs homes. It's the city of Hot Springs, and if we can help do that with some, you know, hours of Tracy to help them get something going, it's a win-win for both parties.
Are you asking counsel to make a decision on this tonight, or...
Well, that was going to be my question. Are you going to have Tracy look at it? He'll make a decision, and then you'll let us know, then we'll make a decision on it after that.
Future meeting?
Yeah.
Since it wasn't on the agenda?
I'm hearing that there's a concern, you know, about Tracy's time, so I would need some kind of indication from you, counsel, that you're, you know, on board with giving him, you know, some initial time to talk with Fall River Health and come up with what you're asking. I would agree to that.
I would support, I would support that.
Based on what I've seen so far, you know, I'm going to need two weeks on this. I'm going to need a month on it. He'll let us know what, what amount of time he feels he's going to need on it, and then it'll give you folks an opportunity to say yes or no.
I support it. We've just lost a really good city administrator because of lack of housing, so, and that just skims the surface. We don't know how many people have left that we could have utilized in our community, except for retirees who are building their own. But yes, I support allowing Tracy to look at the situation.
And I'd agree that we need to do whatever we can do to make this move forward.
I mean, are you asking for our support, or do we need to make a vote on this? What procedure should we do? We can't make a vote. It's not agenda. It's only discussion. What we've done in the past is, unless there's significant pushback from you, that, you know, this isn't something that you could support if it was put to you in front of a vote. I'll take that as a, let's start down the road. Let's give Tracy an opportunity to take a look at what they have and give us a professional opinion of how long he thinks it would take to work with them to get a bid package out on the road or on the street.
Good. I appreciate that.
I would support this, and if we need to vote on it at a later time, and Tracy says yes, then I would go that route personally. But yeah, I support this.
I agree to support the endeavor, and I'll let Tracy look at what they have.
I agree to support the endeavor and I'll let Tracy look at what they have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business, item B. Can I get a motion for a settlement agreement and release between South Dakota Department Transportation Complete Construction and City of Hot Springs?
I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release between the South Dakota DOT Complete Construction and the City of Hot Springs.
Second. Discussion. So Council, this is the agreement that was discussed in executive session about a month ago with DOT and our attorneys present. We had talked about hoping to turn it around a little quicker than it ended up being turned around. But it ends up that there are no, tell me, Austin, if I say this incorrectly, there are no material, materially significant changes to the settlement agreement from what you saw in executive session. There was a redefinition of term project, so, and what I would ask is that Bruce Schroeder, Bruce or whoever you'd like to bring up with you, Bruce, from DOT, if you remember, Bruce was in executive session with us when we talked about this initially, to just give another, you know, update or kind of a description of what the settlement agreement's all about.
So, good evening, I'm Bruce Schroeder. I'm having trouble too, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I'm Bruce Schroeder out of the Custer Area Office and have Tim Wicks from the Custer Office and Tom Haran from the Regional Office with me. And this, this claim settlement will settle, settle the claim for delays and subsequent damages to the contractor on this project from the added work that was done on the project. So, is there any specific questions or?
I guess just clarify, there's no impact to city finances in this agreement?
That'd be correct, yep. The DOT and Federal Highway Administration will be taking care of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So Bruce, you and I chatted today and I'll go back over my question. Is that in this project or in this settlement, there are three city projects included in it, one of them being the suspended sidewalk. And as I talked with you about today, there are still some issues with the suspended sidewalk that need to be addressed. We're having a meeting with ISG Core and possibly you folks tomorrow to address those issues. And the settlement talks about the fieldwork completion date for all work remaining on the projects is extended to December 20th. Upon satisfactory completion of the work, DOT and the city will pay complete concrete in accordance with the existing terms and conditions of their respective contracts. If it ends up that our suspended sidewalk isn't completed to our satisfaction by December 20th, what options do we have available to us to still get that taken care of? And I'd understood you to say it would probably be a situation where the city would give all metal, which Core Construction and All Metal, some additional days to get that work done with not necessarily a fine on our part?
So after the December 20th timeframe, we would follow our specifications, 8.6, and charge days and working days accordingly. If there's added work, that would be handled on CCO. If there are some weather-dependent things that can't be handled till spring, day count would be suspended and then resumed when they can work again.
Okay, all right. So what I'm particularly interested in is that by signing this agreement, we're not waiving any right to work that hasn't been completed as of December 20th?
Correct, yeah. The completion date just changes, it'd be the same as original contract, just a different completion date.
Okay, all right. Austin, do our attorneys have any concern with the agreement?
So as the mayor had said earlier, there's no material changes from the other contract that we've reviewed and discussed before that is moving back. So the consideration is the damages of just like the days being late and such. So that is what we're giving. The city's not losing any money or it's not paying for anything else in addition to that. So as I said, it's something we discussed before, it's just a little definition change in the word projects. You guys have any further questions, clarifications?
Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Drive safe, call home. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Gary Telkamp?
Yes.
Linda Varbel?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Travis Orbach?
Yes.
Hal Glanville?
Yes.
Debra Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. On to new business, item C. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement 2024-13?
I make a motion to approve and to authorize the mayor to sign agreement 2024-13, a professional service agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., to provide the FAA required independent fee estimate, IFE, for the design, construction, and closeout services for the automated weather observation station, AWAS-III, project at the airport at a total cost of $4,200, to be funded by future contingency transfer and reimbursement by AIP Grant.
Discussion. Gary, is there anything you and/or the airport advisory folks would like to?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anything you'd like to add to?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
No. Looks good to me.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item D. Approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to sign the professional services agreement?
Make a motion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to sign a professional service agreement with OASIN Environmental Group for an assessment of effects of historic properties related to the Minnetoka Bridge replacement project at a total cost of $12,000, to be paid for by future supplemental appropriation to the additional sales tax fund, services, and fees, 212-21200-42200.
Second. So this is the agreement that we were talking with Daniel about. Core requires it. If we want a bridge, it's going to cost us $12,000 more than we expected.
Can we take another year and a half?
Yes.
Potentially.
Well, I guess that gives those businesses that need that bridge another year and a half to recover from the road project, so let's paint a silver lining on it.
There you go.
Thanks, Deb.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item E. An automatic budget supplement of $115,058.10.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $115,058.10 to additional sales tax fund, services, and fees, 212-21200-42200, and $6,238.67 to airport improvement, 212-21200-45420, for construction, administration, and construction costs of the hangar, taxi lane, and approach, design, and construction observation and administration. Reimbursement revenue received from AIP Grant Funding Number 3-46-0020-18-2024.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve new business, item F. A travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton.
Make a motion to approve travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton to attend the BHA FOA quarterly meeting in New Underwood, South Dakota on 12/5/24.
Second.
I got notice that this date interferes with an election workshop and so we're asking our member group and New Underwood, since they're hosting, if there's a different date. Would council be okay with approving the travel with a variable date? If we don't get it in December, we'll postpone it, but we're not sure if that date's going to work since that election webinar was scheduled for the same day, so.
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that either.
Thank you.
Sure, why not?
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for a new business, item G. A travel training request from the public works engineer Tracy Bastian, water foreman Sean Hiley, and wastewater foreman Jason Correll.
I make a motion to approve the travel training request from public works engineer Tracy Bastian, water foreman Sean Hiley, and wastewater foreman Jason Correll to attend the water, wastewater treatment class in Rapid City, South Dakota, 11/19 to 11/21 of 2024.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Under our committee reports, our first committee report, Administrative and Finance, JR?
Thank you, Mayor. Admin Finance met at 1:00 PM on November 12th, 12/2024, here at the Mueller Civic Center. In attendance were Mayor Bob Nelson, Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton, Alderwoman Debra Johnston, Alderman Bill Lukens, Chief Ross Norton, and Chair JR Huddleston. Old business, additional costs related to water wastewater replacement, suspended sidewalk, and other road-related project costs, ongoing review and discussion. Water wastewater contract amount remains the same with $102,072 remaining. Suspended sidewalk approved $433,000 for engineering, paid $420,000 with $13,000 remaining. Payments 18, 19, and 20 show $222,000 remaining on contract. Have not yet received any billings from the state, but hope to soon and get them fully paid by the end of the year. Excuse me. Number two, review updated city job descriptions, update desired minimum qualifications, and add to other desired qualifications, remove SDDLIC requirements, update Southern Hills Golf Course work hours/days, descriptions, update recreation director number of hours, title of development coordinator, golf operations manager, description updates. The mayor has the job descriptions and then these will be sent to the department heads for their review. Number three, Fall River County Dispatch Agreement 2025 and beyond under discussion. Number four, discuss temporary signs, banners on pedestrian bridge, sidewalk, railings, public property. A subcommittee will be appointed to discuss. Businesses are not to advertise on public property. Public safety recommends city police department not be the ones to enforce this ordinance. Number four, new business, excuse me, new business. Number one, mayor, none. Number two, committee members, none. Number three, review monthly finance officer report, no changes from the November 4th report, other than receiving the final payment from Prudene of $700. Misty is following the cannabis and wastewater ordinance revisions discussed. Number four, discuss safety policy review for possible changes. Misty to send JR and Bill the policy for review and discussion. Number five, review citywide fee draft resolution for 2025. That is under review, draft resolution coming. Meeting adjourned to 12:35 PM. Next meeting is 9:00, December 9th, at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center. JR Huddleston, Chair, subject to your questions.
Council, any questions for JR? Thank you. Airport advisory, Gary?
Okay, the airport advisory committee met at the airport on Thursday, November 7th of this year at 8:32 AM. There was a call to order, roll call, members present, Shane Miller, Mark Buckstom, and Mike Bogner, employees, airport manager Ivan Venner, public works engineer Tracy Bastian, KLJ airport engineer Charlie Baker, myself, Gary Telkamp, and alderman Bill Lukens. No airport tenants were there, members of the public, Josh Scott. The agenda was approved as written, there was no communication from the public. Airport managers update, monthly fuel sales were 1,041 gallons sold in October with 52 transactions. We reviewed and compared the same month fuel sales for 2022 and 2023. Monthly operations for October were 75 estimated flight operations, 12 balloon launches and zero landings. Airport observations, opportunities for improvement. It has been noted that hangar tenants have left vehicles parked in front of their hangar, impeding movement of aircraft and creating a safety hazard. Airport manager will just address this issue with the tenants. Old business, Charlie Baker, KLJ, reported the following. One, final inspection of new tee hangars took place on June 25th of 2024. Two, substantial completion was reached on September 11th, 2024, when missing submittals were provided. Three, discussed damage to walk-through doors. Four, discussion as to needed waivers, lean waivers. Five, taxi lane seating and multing was completed, but not to specifications. This is going to require redo in the spring of 2025. Six, touch-up grading was completed in October 28, 2024. Seven, AWAS-III supplemental grant was received and project is moving forward. Eight, terminal grant was received from the state of South Dakota, however, we did not receive a grant from the FAA. We cannot move forward financially without both, so that project is on hold and state monies will be released. Another grant request will be made at a future date. New business, fuel pricing. Discussion as to creating a process for determining fuel prices, which will be set by the airport manager, mayor, city administrator, and city finance officer. Rates and fees. The airport manager advised that the ground leases, new renewals and transfers would be increasing from 12 cents per square foot annually to 15 cents per square foot. Two, new tee hangar rental fees will be increasing $35 monthly plus tax. All other rates and fees remain unchanged. Discussion, the committee discussed as how we might be able to promote growth of the airport, not only for the benefit of the airport, but for the city and community at large. Next meeting is set for Thursday, December 5th, at 8:30 AM at the Hot Springs Airport, and the committee adjourned at 10:01 AM. Questions?
Did you have a letter that's?
Do you want me to read that now?
It was my understanding from the email that that's what?
Okay. Well, this is an email that I received and the mayor received and perhaps other members of the council received, I don't know. of the council received, I don't know, but it's from Shane Miller and he's the Airport Advisory Committee Chairman. He says, I'll read that email. Hello to all the Airport Advisory Members and members of the city. I just wanted to let you know, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Want to let you know that I drafted a letter that I'm asking Gary Tellkamp to read on my behalf at the next city council meeting, as I cannot make it due to family commitments. My letter is in response to the proposed increase in land lease rates and why I do not believe the city should raise them at this time. I did not represent this, it's coming from the committee, as these are strictly my opinions. However, I would love to hear everyone's input on this matter and I am open to everyone's thoughts or suggestions on this matter. Thank you, Shane. And this is the letter that you want me to read. Dear Mayor, Bob Nelson, all members of the Hot Springs City Council. My name is Shane Miller and I'm currently acting as chairperson of the Hot Springs Airport Advisory Committee. I am writing this letter to give you my opinion on the new proposed ground lease raised for private hangars at the Hot Springs Menaceville Airport. I understand committees do not have any voting rights or even recommendation ability over city fees. However, I feel I would not be doing my duty as a member of the committee if I didn't let you know how I feel. Between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, the committee, with the help of the mayor, city finance, airport manager and city administrators, worked very hard to come up with a fair and reasonable ground lease that was designed to attract new airport owners to our airport. Since that time, the committee has been spending most of our time working to get the new tee hangars completed. That project was completed this year and all spaces were immediately full, as well as every other available hangar space on the field currently. There have been no newly land lease assigned with the new lease agreement. However, I feel we are in a prime position as an airport to start bringing new people to the airport and potentially build private hangars. I'm ready as a committee member to do my best to recruit people here to use our local mechanics and purchase the fuel you offer, which both, which are both much better sources of revenue for the city. I understand the total proposed dollar amount increase is very small in the end, however, the optics are not. I truly feel if we can keep the land lease rate at twelve cents per square foot for at least another year or two, we can start to get people to move here. Looking at the big picture, if the rates were increased and someone were to build a fifty-by-fifty hangar, the city would get an increase in revenue of seventy-five dollars per year. However, that seventy-five dollars of revenue could be made up for the city in as little as one fuel up for their airplane or one small trip to the maintenance facility. Because our location in Black Hills is not as ideal as Sturgis and Spearfish in proximity to Rapid City, we need to have a better rate than them, not equal. Additionally, when you look at the current lease that we all agreed upon, there is already a clause allows for review as often as every five years, up to two percent increase per year, so even if you don't increase it now, it does allow for future increases on any new lease assigned. I fully support the city of Hot Springs making as much revenue as possible from airport, but the best way to do that is to offer an exceptional opportunity for pilots to bring aircraft here, which has a three-fold bonus to the city, including sales tax, revenue from the maintenance facility, fuel sales and potential increased AIP funding, which is determined largely on the number of based aircraft and total operations. Thank you for your considerations and all the work you do, Shane Miller.
Any questions for Gary? Thank you, Gary. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The board for the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District met Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four here at the Mueller Center and nothing was discussed of importance to the city or affecting the city in any way. The next meeting will be January ninth, twenty-twenty-five at seven o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation met November sixth, five PM at the Mueller Center. Present were Pat Like, Carl Hall, Cara Hagan, Scott Sogi, myself, Mike Summer and Christine Heidebrink. Members of the public were Brad Burns and Brian and Renee Stevens. Minutes were approved from previous communication from the public. Brad Burns, who was, is the contractor for Brian and Renee Stevens, presented a rendition of their proposed improvements to the non-contributing commercial building located at four-thirty-one North River Street. This is the building, it's the left portion of the old VFW. The right portion houses China Walk right at present. So, new owners, Brian and Renee Stevens, they want to create a tap room and they want to take off the stone facade and totally makeover the front of the building, moving the present door, which is right next to the China Walk door. They want to put it on the opposite corner and then they want to create a accordion-type glass wall that opens and closes. And then they've adopted the bump out that's right directly in front of them, that they're going to create a garden that matches their business, so it'll be kind of an indoor-outdoor space. And then they're right across from the waterfall, so they have all these wonderful ideas for a local hangout. So, the motion was made to approve the improvements and they are going to go forward with it as per the historic preservation aspect of the deal. Under new business, election of a new Historic Preservation Commission Chairman, Vice Chairman and Secretary. Upon Pat Likes resignation as chairman, Cara has agreed to chair the December meeting and the commission will elect necessary positions at that time so that more notice of open positions can be advertised and hopefully the meeting will be better attended. So there are going to be openings. If anyone is interested in joining our commission, let the mayor know. Our sign ordinance, multiple committees have been discussing this. We're still waiting a draft for review. It was discussed that there should be a public notice that signs will not be permitted on the new railings or uprights, nor staked signs in the new bump outs as they will penetrate the weed stop and create issues for increased maintenance. It was also discussed that once an ordinance is in place, an individual should have to provide a signed receipt of information to be kept on file for verification in the event that fines need to be imposed. Under old business, there's no new info on the Evans Apartment Windows Grant. Flood channel railings, that's still on hold until further notice of the bid process for that. Deterioration by neglect properties. The two North River Street buildings are being addressed through the legal process by the city attorneys. No further updates at this time. The Evans Plunge, the exterior of the building is in need of paint. If we were to look at different colors, is there a palette that Historic Preservation would like to recommend? They are not ready to repaint at this time, so any color selections were tabled for the time being. There was discussion that it would be nice to update the exterior with new siding materials altogether. Maybe we could check on seeing if any grants are available for such an endeavor. No new updates on the porch columns on eight-oh-two Elm Street. The Historic Property Owners Guide, there was discussion regarding having cards made to hand out with a QR code directing those that own a historic property or that are interested in purchasing one to the Historic Preservation website on the city website. Instead of large printed guides, that would be much more costly to produce and require regular updates to the content. And then the Kidney Springs gazebo columns, I updated the commission that some of the columns had to be reordered to fit the current construction of the gazebo. Meeting adjourned at six-thirty-five and the next meeting is December fourth, five PM at the Mueller Center. Any questions?
Deborah, you mentioned the two North River Street buildings are being addressed. What's happening with the South Chicago Street building or property?
It hasn't officially been notified as far as I'm aware. The process hasn't really been started on that building.
But it's being considered?
Yes.
Okay.
The Historic Preservation Commission wants it to be put on the list more actively.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
The columns that they had, the reordering, are they going to be where the red iron is in the ground now? There's, I think there's three or four columns that have I-beams going up to hold the roof up. Are those the ones they're replacing?
They want to replace all of them, but.
What, all of them, but?
Yeah, we, we didn't get the ones with the I-beams apparently.
No, the I-beams are in the concrete now, holding the roof up and the columns, the wooden columns, they're rounded.
Right.
Is that the ones they're going to replace or the?
We had that discussion at Parks and Rec, since that's part of Parks and Rec. Mayor, you want to give an update on that? So, all eight columns will be replaced. Deborah is correct that there are four steel I-beams in the center of four of those columns. So, the ones that I ordered, I'm at fault for this, were not split columns so that they couldn't be wrapped around those four steel I-beams. But it came out, I believe, in either Public Works or Parks, that the city has taken the, the top of the gazebo off before. So, at this point, my plan would be is to work with the city crews in the spring and actually lift the top of the gazebo off so that we can just lift all of the existing eight columns out of there and then just drop the four over the, the I-beams so that reordering wouldn't be necessary. That's where we're at there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Deborah, you had mentioned the bump out for the new business in the old VFW building. They were going to somehow use it as part of the business?
Um, yeah, it's going to just be an additional curb appeal, I guess you would say.
Okay.
To their business.
Okay. Not going to be seating or anything in it?
No.
Okay, all right.
No, it's just curb appeal and ambiance.
Okay. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, they're aware of this and they're okay with it?
Well, they're the ones that introduced the people on the news, if you read the Hot Springs or the Fall River Herald, two, three weeks ago, they introduced this couple as adopting that bump out and so I'm sure they've discussed their whole plan with Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. You know, it's always good never to assume, but I'm assuming that.
I'll talk to Caitlin.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four at noon at the Evans Plunge. Present were Committee Chair Linda Varvel, employees Kari Moloch, Tom Nas, Gabby Martin. Public present were Renee LaFrance, Allison Ritterbush. Updates on operations were we continue to be understaffed, although Gabby has agreed to work a couple of hours on Thursday evenings to help stave off a Thursday closing for the time being. We have three new applications for lifeguards that we need to get scheduled to Rapid City for training. Also received two new applications for aquatics director. On equipment, the reported blockage has been fixed without tearing up any cement. We will be searching for a reputable plumber for the future. Swim lessons and classes, no date is set, but Gabby will work with Allison to get those dates set up. In the fitness area, we built, we will be raising the age from fourteen to sixteen starting January first, when rates increase. Review of monthly incidents, an elderly gentleman fell in the hot tub area. A lifeguard helped him out and got him into the dressing room. Public communications, Renee presented a list of ideas for recruitment and retention of employees. We just kind of browsed through that list. She had some good ideas, some we've tried and didn't work in the past. Allison reported the swim team is up and going. We adjourned at twelve-twenty-eight PM and the next meeting is December twelfth at noon at the Evans Plunge and the public is always welcome. Any questions?
Will you be closed on Thursday's effective November twenty-first or were you able to stave off a Thursday closing?
We were able to stave off a Thursday closing with.
Gabby?
Gabby.
So, the Facebook post that we put out there saying that they'd be closed on Thursday's effective January, or November twenty-first can be updated to say that?
It can be because this meeting happened after that Facebook post went out.
Okay, I'll make sure that we post an update to that so that the members know, they'll be happy to hear that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
And did you say that the rates were going to go up?
According to what Misty had in here, I looked and it looks like the, the rates are going to go up for.
It's the age for these health clubs. No rates went up.
Oh, okay.
They eliminated a punch card for fitness.
Okay.
But there were no increases to the rates otherwise.
Anyone else? Thank you, Linda.
All right, thank you.
Parks Recreation Beautification, Larry, Linda?
Next meeting will be December fourth at two PM here at the Mueller Center. Everyone is invited. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
They will be meeting this Wednesday, the twentieth, six PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Okay, Public Safety met Thursday, November seventh at one PM at Mueller Center. Members present were JR, myself, Deborah, Gary Tellkamp, Mayor Nelson, Chief Norton, Assistant Fall River County Emergency Manager Gary Baker and Larrie Haskovitz, Fall River Health Services Emergency Department Nurse Manager. Members of the public present were Craig Romi. We adopted the agenda as published. Communications from the public, member of the public brought the following concerns to the committee. A concrete pad has been poured over roof drain pipes that blocked the sidewalk behind two businesses along Main Street. The member of the public was informed that the businesses have been informed that this is unacceptable and must be addressed. Secondly, it appears that a business, there's a business running out of the old armory at Eleventh Street and Evanston Avenue. There's been no use permit on review. This issue will be investigated. Thirdly, concern was expressed for the number of vehicles parked in boulevard spaces between the curb and the sidewalk, which is prohibited by city ordinance. This issue also will be investigated. Update from the Police Department, the department is again fully staffed from some medical issues and family leave issues. They've been working a number of high priority events and in October, the department responded to three-hundred-and-seventy-eight calls, fifty-six of which were considered high-risk calls. Year-to-date, sixteen-point-five-three percent of the thirty-nine-hundred-and-eight calls have been high-risk calls. Under old business, the speed sign repair and relocation to Nineteenth and University, this issue is being actively worked with South Dakota DOT but has not yet been resolved. Secondly, the speed limit consistency issue on the Highway eighteen is being worked with South Dakota DOT. We had no update on the other open items. Under new business, public safety related. Under new business, public safety related fees of the fee schedule were reviewed and the committee had no recommended changes. Signage related ordinance pertaining to city parks was reviewed and again, as it was already reported, it was recommended that the PD should not be involved in enforcement of the advertising related signage. And after considerable discussion, it was felt that a cross functional committee should address the issue. Item three under new business, the November 1 to March 31 trailer parking, a member of the public had observed 28 trailers or RVs were parked on the street after the November 1 deadline to remove them. The chief informed the committee that as of the November 7 meeting, 23 trailers had been tagged, had been toe tagged by the PD. A notice has also been posted on social media to help inform and educate the public of the requirement to remove those trailers. And due to the population of turkeys in town, South Dakota Game Fish and Park will be contacted to request that they be trapped and relocated. And we had hoped to have an update on the Firewise Grant, but we're still waiting on the city administrator to pursue that. We adjourned at 2:21 PM and our next meeting will be Thursday, December 5th, 1:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
So related to the turkeys, saw an email back from Trenton?
Yes.
Regarding the turkeys, Bill had sent out an email to him asking what Game Fish and Park could do to help us out with the turkeys. And if I misstate something here, Bill, correct me. But at the heart of what Trenton said is that they, the Game Fish and Parks folks, they net the turkeys and then they relocate them. But they need to draw them into an area where they can net a large amount of them. And because of the feeding of turkeys by residents throughout the community, it's making it difficult for the state to compete and get the turkeys where they want them so that they can trap them. So we'll continue working the problem with the state. I just want to remind the public that it's against city ordinances to feed wild game within the city. And you may like turkeys, but they don't stay on one particular property. They move all over the place. So the flock of 20 that you may like, your neighbors may not be at all happy with. Anybody that's around Hot Springs knows that we have a turkey problem. There's a bunch of them out there. So I'd ask the public to help us out and stop feeding the turkeys.
And if I recall, and if I'm recalling improperly, I apologize, but last year when they attempted to trap them at the state home, it was, it was worse than people feeding them. It was people interfering with the netting of the turkeys. So they were actually, folks, I think, were going out and interfering with the state's attempt to trap the turkeys. So just as with many issues, there are diverging opinions. There's active interference with, with an attempt to take care of this problem. My email to Trenton was that it appears that the number of turkeys is about to surpass the number of registered voters in town. So we do have an issue and...
Can they register?
What's, what's the public education outreach like to educate residents about the situation? Like as far as the trapping and the not feeding and all that? Is it actively being pursued or?
That's the next step we need to take. After we've heard from Trenton now, I would like to share as much of Trenton's response to Bill's question with the public that if we're going to ask the state to help us, we have to help ourselves. And that doesn't mean residents feeding turkeys, making it more difficult for the state to attract them to the areas they would like to be able to net them in and relocate them.
It's a good idea though, Travis, and we have a great newspaper and can use the city website and some other resources to, when we get something arranged with the state to maybe do some public education pieces around what we're trying to accomplish.
Make sure it's like they see nests, they're not trying to hurt them, they're trying to protect them and move them out.
The issue is there, at least as of a year ago, there was a turkey shortage in the Northern Black Hills, so we were happy to try to help with that shortage.
Like keeping families together?
Yes.
But the public feeding, the wildlife isn't just limited to turkeys. They feed the deer as well, and they draw in raccoons and skunks and with the food that they put out for these animals. Because it's not just turkeys that you're drawing in, it's everything else.
All right. JR, anything you'd like to add?
No, good job, Bill.
Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Bill, Al?
Next Public Works meeting will be November 26th at 1:00 PM and the public is invited.
Thank you. There is no golf course advisory while the course is closed. So that brings us to Finance Officer report. Misty, do you have anything for us?
I'd just like to remind council, as it appears there was a number of spam IT emails sent to our council members today, that Black Hills Technologies is our IT professionals that we work with. And please look closely at senders and then the language in emails to identify. There's not a lot we can do to stop some spam from getting in. We have filters, but they come in. So if you have questions, please call. And if you see that one, go ahead and right click Junk Block Sender because it's not from our IT professionals. I'd also like to report the previously reported FLSA, which stands for the Fair Labor Standards Act, overtime rule changes that were effective July 1st of this year. And then with another increase, January 1st of 2025, have been vacated by the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, effective on Friday, and that applies nationwide. The court criticized the rule's steep rise in the salary threshold level, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that at the next Admin Finance meeting. But unlike many other businesses, we responded to the increase effective July 1 and were prepared to respond to the additional increase January 1, but now it's been vacated and changed again. In the finance office, I've been working on revisions to the cannabis ordinances. There were two. I sent the drafts to the mayor, Jessica from Dakota Kind and Scott Soggy. The zoning ordinance revisions require public hearings at both P&amp;Z and council. So the email I sent on the 14th of November set the following time schedule, and I wanted you to be prepared for it. P&amp;Z at the November 20th meeting, you'll review and potentially set the hearing for your meeting for the 18th of December. Then City Council on the 16th of December will set our hearing for the 6th of January meeting, where the first reading can be held for both ordinances after the hearing. Drafts will be available to council by the December 2nd meeting in your info only side. And we'll work on drafting revised applications and permits. I'm also following the wastewater ordinance revisions, and I haven't seen any progress on that yet either, so I will probably start a draft for that as well, as those changes were presented to be effective January 1, and they would need to move faster than they have if you're going to make those changes be effective on that date. The city fee resolution to be effective January 1, 2025 draft is on the info only sides of your packet for this meeting. The plan is to have the resolution on the agenda for December 2nd. I need feedback on some of the highlighted fees. Please provide your input as soon as possible. Because of the Thanksgiving holiday, city offices will be closed Thursday, the 28th, and Friday, the 29th for the holiday. So we're hoping, excuse me, hoping to get council packets for the first meeting in December, ready for you to pick up by noon on Wednesday, the 27th. But that puts everything ahead a little bit, so including those city fees for reviews, anything for that agenda, and then picking up your packets will hopefully be ready for you on that Wednesday, since we'll be closed Thursday and Friday, but have a meeting following Monday. I did receive notification last week on our 2025 workman's comp. The invoice is approximately $20,000 higher than budgeted. We'll review this in detail at the next Admin Finance meeting, and we'll need to supplementally appropriate money departments and funds for the 2025 budget, which if you remember, we already had cash applied over $700,000 to that budget. So sorry about that. We'll review it, but it's another one of those costs of doing business that have increased significantly for the cities. And that's all I have. Ending, any questions?
Good job.
Thank you, Misty. I have three items to update you on tonight. In your personnel actions, you approved the retirement of Scott Soggy, our Development Coordinator, effective December 31st of this year. The current job description or the title is Development Coordinator, which just doesn't seem to capture everything that that position does. So I've been chatting with Misty a little bit. It was changed back in 2013 from its old title to Development Coordinator. But I'd like to change that to something that's a little more fuller of what the position actually does, so I'll be talking with you about that. Gary was talking about in his, his report, airport fuel pricing. And currently, any airport fuel price change comes to council via resolution. We haven't had one in a bit, but it ends up being, I think, a little unnecessary. We've done it that way because the airport manager, we've been advised by our auditors, it's council that can change prices, not individual employees in that sense. So what we've been talking about, when I say we, Ivan, Misty, Bob when he was here and myself, were looking at getting council to approve a process, not individual price increases or decreases, but the process to arrive at why a price would change and put that in front of you. So it would be a matter of looking at, we know we're going to need some fuel in the next month, two months, whatever it may be, and what should the right price of that fuel be? So Ivan would do some checking with other airports. And there's also a national website that he can go to, that he can punch in within a 25 mile radius, a 55, or 50 mile radius, 100 mile radius, to get an average of what those prices are. So we'd use that as a starting point and then figure out how much we want to make on every gallon of gas we sell. And then review that information with Finance Officer, City Administrator Ivan and myself, and decide on what the next price should be, fuel price should be. And then we would let you know what that new price would be. But you wouldn't be approving an increase or a decrease, you would be approving a process so that we don't put those resolutions in front of you all the time. It ends up being, for the most part, a rubber stamp as far as the price change. So if we can get you to rubber stamp the process, I think it'd be a little, little better to go that way. And the last thing is the Valley View Road. It's been on Public Works radar for probably four years. It's not a good road. And the city was doing Band-Aid fixes to it. It wasn't a matter of not doing quality work, they're just very limited in what they're able to do to the road versus what's actually necessary for it. So I've asked Bill to bring that back up on Public Works. Bob Jr., before he left, he had gotten three quotes from a couple, from three engineering firms to design the work there. I think it really is a matter of giving them a hard surface road, storm drain, and curb and gutter, rather than trying to do it the way we've been doing it. So we'll, we'll hit that a little harder and see what the right solution to get that road taken care of. In the, in the summer, it's a mess from rain, and in the winter, it's a mess from the snow and trying to keep it graded and travelable. So we'll figure out what we're going to do there and make a recommendation to council about the best way to approach it.
After hearing from Fall River Health, is that not something our engineer can do? The design, we got bids from a, from three different places to design the work, but then we just heard from them, they want our engineer to design their roads or put together their bid package. It just made me wonder if the Valley View Road design work could be done in-house.
He has the technical expertise, does he have all the necessary equipment? Tracy spent about five or six months out on the golf course. It's not that he doesn't have the skill, it's, does he have the time and the equipment? It's a, it's a discussion we can have. Any questions for me? All right, with that, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening.